Did you turn off the recording?
It shows that it is still waiting to be.
Yeah, it was hung up or something.
It's going out, so.
All right, someone texted me and asked if it would be in broadcast.
Yeah.
I said it couldn't see it, so.
Yeah, we had a break of recording going, but the broadcast wasn't. It was still sitting in there spinning, but I think it's fixed now.
Okay, so we're gonna delay that for a study session. When's that gonna be?
The study session will last, we'll set that at the end here. Let's get through these.
If you accept your resignation, which I just as a formality, you're gonna do that. Then you'll need to appoint, that makes it vacant tonight. And so you appointed the first rate of reading following. So you'll have to do all this before that.
Well, I'll make a motion that we very sadly accept Ms. Ringel's resignation. And I'm gonna reschedule to the study session.
And do you know when you wanna do that?
Let's need to.
We need to thank the Martin.
I need to carry that motion first.
We have a, we have a motion for Mr. Thacker to accept the resignation letter, resignation for the city clerk. Do we have a second?
I have layering.
We have a second from. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then when we get to the end of tonight, we'll, we'll set the dates that we're gonna get together for the daycare and for this issue. All right, let's move on. Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash six, talking about the new city wards. We need a, a motion to bring this ordinance to the table.
So.
Second. Okay. Roll call, please.
Um, well, Jensen B. is absent. Evan Thacker.
Uh, yes.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Glasson.
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield.
Yes.
Gary Perry.
Yes.
All right, to entertain a motion to waive the three readings and read by title only.
Okay. Are we not going to discuss this?
Yes, once we get it to the table and read it. So we need a motion to read by title only and waive the three readings.
Motion to suspend the rule and read it by title only.
Okay. Have a second for Ms. Kilpatrick. Let me roll call for that too, please.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Um, Larry Glasson.
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield. Gary Perry.
Yes.
Evan Thacker.
Yes. All right, this is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash six. An ordinance to redistrict the city of Alma, Arkansas into new voting or ward divisions. This is now open for discussion. We, we have Tina here from Wapadiddy. She's the one that actually worked on this, worked on the census data and the census blocks and was able to come up with the, the new map. Everybody, again, has had this in their packet. Hopefully they've had a chance to look at it. Is there any discussion, questions? The biggest.
Okay, this map, uh, that shows the city of Alma, city ward map. Okay, for instance, I'm in Ward Three. What, what changes are there going to be?
So the biggest change on that's gonna be Eagle Crest moving into Ward Two. Previously was in Ward Three.
Okay.
And the, and the makeup of the council as it sits right now will have to change because it'll put Mr. Thacker, Mr. McGee, and Mr. Wakefield in the same ward. And we'll have to have one new person, at least one new person, because Mr. Perry will be the only person now in Ward Three.
So when is this gonna take effect?
So the way the law works is if you approve this map, it would be at the next election.
What the next?
So you wouldn't have to resign. Yeah, so and it wouldn't actually go into effect till January. So once whoever's elected, you would have to run based on this new map. And then whoever's elected would take office in January. So y'all would all serve as you sit down, as is.
And if I recall, there was, there was, maybe Cody, you can help clarify this.
Yeah, well, actually, the previous map probably wasn't legal, based on talking with Tina, how the wards have to be contiguous. So they have to be together and, yeah. We're, the state had a totally different map. We're running by this other map, so.
You don't see the, the.
So, yeah, but that's a sense of, because I'm not a very.
Because it can still maybe two people.
Well, I mean, that just gets into federal constitutional violations.
Oh, but that's.
And, and based on the allocation of, you know, the population per ward, it falls within the crack area. Okay, so I mean, just had to, just had to ask.
And remind everybody too, that a part of this, you'll see that this is kind of a, a different makeup than what we're used to. Everyone will have to sign off on this, so. Before you leave tonight, if this passes.
And if you don't pass this one, you gotta, you'll have to have a special meeting because you've got a headline coming up.
Has to be in place by first of March, right?
There's only twenty seconds when I have.
Yeah, Tuesday is my understanding of it.
All right.
So, so you don't, you do not have to pass it, that's true.
Special meeting.
But you'll have to, you'll have to, you'll have a meeting every week, but they'll have to work overtime to draw you some new maps.
I think this is done well, and I, I think we need to approve it. So I make the motion that we approve this as it sits, the information that, that service.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Thacker, second. Mr. Glassing game, roll call, please.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Larry Glasson.
Yes.
Gary Perry.
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield.
Yes.
Um, Evan Thacker.
Yes.
And then Jensen B. is absent.
All right.
Then this has to be signed.
Motion carries.
I did write that.
Oh, yeah, so we'll need a, since this is the redistricting and goes into effect, or it has to be filed with the state by the twenty-second. We do have an emergency clause on this.
And I will tell you, the statute in Arkansas, I, I read it today, because mayor had a couple of questions. And actually, citizens can do a referendum. They have ninety days if they think this is not fairly representative of the city. And so they can file something to have it overturned, and they've got ninety days to do that, so.
Do I need to read the emergency clause on this one?
If somebody would like a motion to declare an emergency, it might go into effect immediately.
I'll make that motion.
So we have a, we have a motion for Mr. Perry to declare the emergency. Everybody go into effect immediately. Do we have a second?
Not a second.
We have a second for Mr. Thacker. We'll need a roll call on that one also.
Gary Perry.
Yes.
Uh, Larry Glasson.
Yes.
Sandra Kilpatrick.
Yes.
Evan Thacker.
Yes.
Eddie Wakefield.
Yeah.
And then Jensen B. is absent.
All right. Next up, it's gonna be resolution twenty-two dash nine. This is adopting citizen participation resolution. Need a motion to bring this one to the table. So move, we have a motion for Mr. Thacker. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Glassing game. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nine. This is a resolution adopting the citizen participation plan for Alma, Arkansas, and for, for other purposes. What this pertains to is a grant that we are applying for through HUD for our senior center. It was just handed to me tonight, the plans I haven't been able to look through. But basically, what we're trying to do at the senior center is, they serve a lot of meals out of the senior center. We, we compete here in Alma, out of our senior center. We compete with the number of meals of the top center in Sebastian County, meaning when you start talking about Fort Smith, for example. So we've been in tight quarters over there as it is for a while. We haven't done any really major upgrades to the senior center in a while. The kitchen, it's tight and close in there compared to, well, for an example, we, we, we do as many, if not more, meals as what Van Buren does. And their kitchen is about three times bigger than what, with what ours is. So it's really tight quarters in there. So the idea was, was to be able to actually build a new kitchen for the center. And what the, what kitchen is there now will be turned into dining room space. The grant HUD, there's some grant money out there for these projects. That's, you know, the cost to us would be minimal. And, and by talking to Tracy, who was here earlier, the engineering right now comes in, in, into play with the allotment that, that is out there for these grants. So anyway, all this is saying is, is that we're gonna participate and do, we've already had one public hearing. And we'll just do the things that we need to do, is what this resolution says. And it'll be really good for our seniors. We had about twenty, twenty-two, I think it was, twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two people that showed up in the public hearing, by the way. So we need a, a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. Next up, again, kind of on the same subject. This is resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten. We need a motion to bring this to the table, if you would, please.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Again, this is a resolution that, well, it was just, it's twenty twenty-two dash ten. This is a resolution authorizing the submittal of an application for ACEDP grant funds for the state of Arkansas. Again, this is pertaining to work at the senior center. And all this resolution does is gives permission to, to make that application. Tracy McKinnon is the one that is writing that grant. She's a, she's a great grant writer. She does a good job. She's the one that does art grants. And there's no questions. We need a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-two dash ten.
So move. Second.
We have a motion for Mr. Wakefield, a second for Mr. Thacker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's. Now I need the council, if, if they would, to amend the agenda so that we can bring resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve to the table. And again, this is pertaining to the senior center.
About eleven, twenty twenty-two dash eleven.
Yeah, yeah, you can't undo this now. I want, since this pertains to the senior center, I was gonna see if we could go ahead and address this one now. And then we'll move on to.
And so it's eleven, correct?
I have eleven, but I don't have a quote of.
It's at the back.
Here you go.
Do you have a quote? I'll bring it over your shoulder.
Well, before we get too carried away, we need a motion to amend the, the agenda.
Make a motion that we amend the agenda to handle resolution twenty twenty-two dash twelve, following twenty twenty-two dash ten.
Okay, we have, we have a motion for Mr. Thacker. Do we have a second? We have a second for Ms. Kilpatrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Twenty twenty-two dash twelve, this resolution, this is a resolution establishing a policy prohibiting the use of excessive force by law enforcement agencies within the applicant's jurisdiction against individuals engaged in nonviolent civil rights demonstrations. This is a resolution that Mr. Brister is very familiar with. I did forward this to our chief and have him look at it. This basically is, used to be part of the contract with anything that we did with HUD that we just signed off on, stating that we would, you know, not use excessive force. Basically everything that this resolution says. But now then, HUD requirements are that this be done in the manner of a resolution. It's no longer just part of the contract for the grants. And, I mean, we, we already have these policies in place anyway, like, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't change anything.
I mean, it doesn't, it just doesn't change anything for us. It's, we already have all of this in place. We adhere to all of these policies.
Yeah, you, you were familiar with this, right?
Yeah, I looked over it and, you know, those are things that we already have department policies on. There's some state laws on some of those things. Sean and I have talked about it and, yeah, I think we're good on it.
Motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash twelve.
Second.
Seconds to Mr. Thacker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. And then the other agenda item that was added, you know that you have this, resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven. This is for the Fayetteville Avenue Improvement. We need a motion to bring this to the table.
So move. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash eleven. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor or his designated representative to acquire the necessary property for the proposed Fayetteville Avenue Improvement project. This is something that Mr. Yardley and I had talked about, and I'll let Martin address the council.
Just, I, I sent y'all an email this afternoon, basically saying what I was wanting to say about this. And that is that this, this particular piece of property, it's the subject of this resolution, is one that, that was affected by our street scape project. And as you know, when we, when the contractor was working on the parking lot area, they ended up doing damage to the building to the point that it had to be demolished. The building was, was, was not redeemable. So, so this lot came open as a result of that. The, the contractor ended up settling with the, with the owners and for the, for the cost of the structure itself. But they wanted to maintain ownership of the lot with the intention of, of building a new building there. But then, when they realized the cost associated with building, building that location, they, they, they made the decision to, to move elsewhere. And so now the lot has been made available to, and they've given the, the city the, you know, first opportunity to purchase that. And so what I would say to that is that, you know, that this lot is, is a result of, of the activity of the street scape. And then the fact that it's adjacent to property that we already own as part of the street scape purchase. My recommendation is that we purchase the property, but that we purchase it with street funds and actually connect it to the existing properties that we purchased for, for street purposes. So that the, the, the good thing is that we have unappropriated funds in the street department that could be used for that. And, and then secondly, it would reduce the burden on the general fund. So that would just be my recommendation.
So do we need a resolution for the street department to purchase it because it's under spending money?
No, it's just unappropriated funds. That's the only reason that we put the, the resolution together. But it's, it fits within all of the guidelines that we have. And there's, there's a ton of potential for that piece of property. There's a lot of different.
So, so do we need the resolution or do we not?
Yes, uh, yeah, it, we, I had spoke with Sean about it. Since it's unappropriated funds in this manner, it's always best if we can.
Okay.
Do it by resolution.
It's the most conservative approach. You may not need it, but it. It covers all bases, just in case. Do we need to specify that it's gonna be taken care of by the street department or is how it's written?
I didn't know how you wanted to spend the money, so I, the resolution itself is silent as to where you're gonna fund it. So you might make, you might make an additional motion after you pass the resolution to appropriate money from that project fund to do it.
Or amend, amend this resolution.
I can do that.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
So, so we'll need a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty-two dash eleven with the amendment that the funds will come from the street department.
I made that motion. Is it, have you got, is it still street, street scape fund project or what's?
No, this, no, there, it would just be the, the general street fund.
Okay.
I'm second. Oh, we need a motion. All right, oh, there you go, okay. I'm sorry. All right, so we have a second for Mr. Perry. And we, so all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So that one pays. All right, we'll get on now to our department reports, and we are gonna start with Chief Wakefield.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, it's a pretty busy month. January is a pretty busy month for the city of Alma Fire Department. We had one structure fire, one rekindle, uh, two calls for smoke alarms, one wildland fire, two smoke investigations, and one CO2 alarm. Other than possibly putting something on the next study session about recurring smoke alarms at the same location and, uh, you know, discussing that, everything else is, is great. We might want to discuss that. We've had two calls to the same location already this month for false alarm. Starts to get a little expensive when you spend five hundred dollars in man tire to do that.
Do you know expenses?
I, we need to, well, I was thinking of, yeah.
We'd be, I mean, we brought up speed.
Yeah.
I'll look, they're not uncommon to have those ordinances, and I, I don't know off the top of my head, but.
I don't penalize anybody.
Usually those ordinances are structures where it's X number of false alarms within a certain timeframe.
And that's what I feel confused to do. Other than that, I think everyone's agreed.
Okay. All right, any questions for Mr. Wakefield?
I have one. I'll be writing fast. One structure, one rekindle, two smoke alarm, two CO2, and one wild one?
No.
Okay.
Here. Those marks are.
Are the numbers. All right, thank you.
All right, no other questions, we'll move on. Mr. Foyer, Chief Foyer, it's all yours.
Thank you.
I'll keep you brief, too.
Sure, it's my time to talk. First off, I would like to kind of echo what the council said. Sean, I appreciate everything you've done while you've been here. And, you know, every time we've asked for something or tried to track something down, then you've done a good job. Sometimes I've had to go back and forth to figure out exactly what was going on, but we do appreciate you. Uh, just thought, update on the, the two new positions that we had. We had hoped already had those filled. And this is, again, not anything new. Our applicants are down. It's not just us, but it's a lot of agencies. Uh, just about every agency anywhere around us right now is hiring. They're having low applicants. We have, we do have some, some applications, and so we've got some interviews scheduled next week. So hopefully something good will come out of those, and we can get those filled. More than likely, we will be looking at sending another person to the academy, which cuts out being able to use them. But if you don't have a certified officer to hire, it's either send away or, or go for it. So, so we'll see how those turn out. I did get a little bit of, hopefully, good news on our, our vehicles that we've got ordered. The dealership is starting to get more and more in every day, he said. So he told me not to hold him to this, but he expects within the next thirty to sixty days that he'll have ours in. And again, he asked me not to hold him to that, but I told him I would, and so. Other side of that now is that they're, since they're getting more and more in right now, they're assembling more outfitting and equipment in them. So now they're getting backed up on that. So we may get them to Arkansas, and they may be sitting here for a little while before we actually get use of them. But if we can get them here, then I'll feel a whole lot better about them. Radios, if this subject's come up several times, as y'all know, we finally got some yesterday afternoon, some, some demo repeaters installed. Smith Two-A Radio has set up a couple of digital repeaters for us. Gave us a couple of demo portable radios to, to try out. And just trying them out for just a little while today. We had good luck out of them. We'll keep doing some testing with them and then work with Chief Wakefield and, and let those guys do some testing with them and then go from there. But these are a whole lot cheaper than our current radios. So if we decide to go this route, then hopefully the expense won't be as large as, as what we have currently. And other than that, uh, I think that's all I've got, Mr. Wakefield.
How's the, how's the nightly dispatch operating? There were hundreds of keys or?
Well, we, we are. You know, it's not, it's nightly now, they're.
Sure, yeah, full on.
Full blown, so, um, you know, there's been several things come up that we've had to work through that, you know, you try to think of everything as beforehand, but you can't think of everything. So there's, there's things that have to come up that we have to work through problems and figure out how to handle them going forward. You know, the, some things you don't want to beat a squeaky wheel on. You want to kind of give it some time and hope that it works itself out. So, uh, you know, I think as long as they get in there and get, everyone gets used to it and it settles in a little bit, that a lot of that will get better.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
And I'll add a little bit to that. I was talking with Joni today at the intergovernmental meeting. They've been running under staff, but she said, as of right now, they are fully staffed. Last time we talked, they were still down. So that's, that's good news. Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mr. Yardley, you're up.
You go short too long for the.
That's the one that should be.
Also, I want to echo what everyone else has said about Sean. And, you know, when she first came here, she, we talked every day, almost several times a day. And, and I so appreciated her understanding of accounting and bookkeeping and, and her ability to work through what she had inherited, which was a mess. And, and she was able to, to bring that all around to where we have an organized, usable system now. And I don't know how much to say, what else I could say, other than you will be missed.
Thank you for saying that.
And other than that, I just had a couple of things to share with you. We, in the last meeting, I shared that we had three openings in the Public Works Department. So we have filled two of those and very pleased with the candidates that were chosen. We still have one more position to fill, and we're, we're interviewing now for those positions. And I hope to have a good candidate in the very near future. And other than that, just kind of echoing what, what Jeff said about supply chain issues. We are experiencing some trouble with getting some components to our system. And, and so there's, one of the things that really critical to our system is water meters. And, and we're being told that it's gonna be maybe May or June before we get water meters. there's a one of the things that really critical to our system is water meters and and we're being told that it's going to be maybe May or June before we get water meters. And I and this is no fault of the of the of the of the company that that supply on these, it's just a it's just an issue everywhere. And, uh, so we're looking at alternatives because we cannot, you know, we need a water meter, we have to have one, so. So we're looking at some alternatives and so hope that, um, hope that it doesn't become a problem. We're just trying to look ahead and see what we can do to some of these things, so. Anything and I don't have anything else to share unless Sean has some questions.
Um, you have filled two like two positions, will there be someone other than Mitchell on the payroll tomorrow?
No, the in in the street department, we filled, uh, the the position that that Mitchell took and then in the in the line office department, a gentleman.
Which is not going to be with our payroll.
I mean, that's concerning. Yeah, yeah.
It's indicated to get.
The other positions will be on my side.
Okay, got it. Okay, then we're good.
All right.
Any other questions?
What position are you looking to fill?
We, um, I'll just tell you all that we've, uh, you know, we have, we've always been very considerate of existing employees and if there's an opportunity to to promote an employee, we 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 do our best to make that happen as long as we feel like they're they're able to to fulfill that at some point, you know. It requires training, so, um, what I would like to do is bring in a gentleman from the, uh, the, uh, water treatment plant to to come into the office. And, uh, as y'all know, Tony Maxwell made the decision to go back to the wastewater plant and, uh, there were, there were several factors that affected his decision. It was actually a cut in pay, but but he, uh, he was, that's what he decided to do for his for his own peace of mind, so. Uh, that left a position there in the office, assistant director position, and, uh, there's a gentleman named Jacob Deves that, uh, is at the water treatment plant. He's originally from Ozark and, uh, he worked at the Ozark Water System and he was actually a candidate for for the director position there and, uh, he was, he was not getting that job and that's when he came to work for us, so he's he's got the credentials, he just, uh, he just, uh, um, he made the decision to go to work at the water treatment plant here in Alma. And so, you know, I'd like to consider him for that position and that would that would leave an opening at the water treatment plant, so for an operator at the water treatment plant. And of course, we would love to get someone with a license, but that 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 these days, you know, as as Jeff can tell you, you don't, you don't you'll get candidates or applicants that are already certified, so we're going to probably have to train someone to do that. And it's expensive and time consuming, it takes it takes over a year to get just the the first level of licensing for an operator, so. It's a big investment, so we want to make sure we get a candidate that if if they're not already certified, that that will that will stay here with us. That's the main thing, so. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Schindler, planning.
Good evening, Council. I wanted also just close echo as everybody else said, you know, definitely appreciate Sean, you being here and now I've now I've had a lot of questions and especially out of budget, like why is this chart here, what is this and, you know, we got it all straightened out and so, you know, just communication helps a lot, so as long as, uh, any you've been able to answer any of those questions, you know, we we're fine and so. It's really helpful for anything that, um, you've also questioned on my stuff too, so we're glad that, you know, we get everything straightened out, so.
Sounds like when everyone has questions, they just know to come to Sean.
Well, we have the budget stuff.
I figured out. Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome. Uh, so, planning department, we've had sixteen permits issued during the month of January, uh, by a total revenue just over seventeen hundred. Uh, that revenue is a little bit below average, but higher than the previous three years. We just have that anomaly here and I believe it's twenty-seven. Um, so, but other than that, we've had, uh, three total residential additions and remodels, a total, um, construction value of ninety thousand. Uh, one of those is included on Column Lane, you guys might have noticed. It's the, um, I don't know, it's been kind of run down for a long time, but it's finally getting remodeled, so. I know it's been kind of a blight on our community, but it's, you know, moving forward, so. Uh, some of the other ones are kind of smaller, so I didn't really, uh, weren't really mentioning those, but, um, the future land use plan and master street plan is underway. I've given Crafton Toll, um, you know, GIS data to help them get started and then they're coming for a site visit next Thursday. And so they were supposed to be here, shoot, I think like two or three weeks ago, but we can never get our, uh, schedules aligned, you know, we had snow days, I had death in the family and then, um, Crafton Toll's also dealing with some family issues as well, so it's just kind of trying to get everything lined out right, so. So, uh, we've also been, of course, assisting with the city ward, uh, redistricting map, of course, you guys approved that. That was a long process and, you know, we're just glad that, of course, got that done with the assistance of Tina and Wapadiddy, so. Uh, Solar Farm Project is moving forward, they, uh, completed all their floodplain, um, uh, registration, so. They were supposed to have a groundbreaking ceremony today, of course, the weather decided to go from sixty to thirty today, so. Great. Uh, so I'm not sure when the new, uh, date is going to be, but I'm sure the mayor will keep you guys posted, so. We also held a pre-construction meeting, uh, for road trails, uh, on with the mayor and the arts department. And so I'll be assisting a little bit with the inspections and whatnot on, you know, trying to make sure that, um, that they're using PMPs and not affecting our water supply with, um, with our stormwater management plan, so you have to make sure that they're abiding by all these rules, especially with, uh, the water source that we're using, so. But we're also still needing ten more business licenses, uh, and most of those are businesses that are either, you know, ones that are only operational during certain times and also, you know, they're not always there as well, so they're kind of kind of mobile. So it's kind of hard to get their attention when it's like, well, we're only going to be there for a couple of months and so it's, uh, we're trying to kind of keep it in check, but me and Rhonda has definitely kept it in check, she's been keeping most on keeping me on page on what needs to be filled and what doesn't need to be filled and and then Peewee's been definitely helping out, assisting on giving out business licenses, so. Keeping that on track and keeping those people posted that, you know, they'll pay those fees whenever it's paying, so. Um, the chamber board elected me to be on their board, um, I happily accepted and I'm excited to be able to represent the city and, of course, having, um, experience with planning background, so, you know, it'll be a good time, um, serving. I know, uh, at least Colby Barker for sure, I've had a leadership with him and so it was kind of nice that we were both got to be on at the same time, so we're actually going to be meeting for coffee.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you. Uh, so the planning commission did not meet, um, this February, I was sick and then, actually, I wasn't sick at that time, but there was a rise in, um, COVID cases, I think I was sick the week before. And then, uh, we're still waiting on updated RV plans from the RV park, because I know Peewee had an issue with some of their, um, it was like their separation of their launcher net and their building itself, and so I'm not too familiar with building codes, I'll leave Peewee with the fire stuff. And so they're trying to work around it and work with architects to try to get that all separated, so. Uh, the public hearing was still held though, and me, Rhonda and Peewee were there and, you know, be attended and we still haven't heard anything via email, if I'm called in person, so. And then planning commission still has one more opening, so if anybody has a recommendation, please send it my way. And I have, uh, the top five goals for twenty twenty-two, I know Larry, um, kind of mentioned that at the last year, and so I just kind of want to continue it. Uh, my top five goals are complete the future land use plan, master street plan, add apartment zoning for zoning regulations, we don't have that. Three, uh, look at potentially updating permit fees, they haven't been updated since twenty fourteen and we feel like with inflation and everything else, maybe it's time to update our parts, maybe not too much, but at least some things where we're not, uh, getting kind of kicked around. I know Peewee had to do a fire vent and only charged like twenty-five dollars for that. Now, these old truck, um, I'm sure you saw on our insurance, uh, we got charged a little bit more than we were budgeted and so I'm assuming it's that. If not, then it's still going to help when we sell it, so, um, definitely on the to-do list. I know right now it has a dead battery, so I don't want to pay for some battery on that, I just want to sell it as is. I'm gonna, I guess I need to get with Sean and the mayor and just make sure, whatever process that is, to take care of it. Um, I had ten training for various certifications. I know Wapadiddy, I think in UCA are having a mini CDI in Fort Smith in April, I think I might attend that. And then we have, um, of course, CDI regularly in August and we have, I think, a floodplain conference in April as well, so. Have some stuff already looking up and then might attend, I think, HVAC training, which I need to find a date, but I can't find that. Any other questions or your questions?
Um, when is your site visit with Crafton Toll?
Next Thursday. Twenty-four or what day is it?
I'll look it up.
Yeah, it should be twenty twenty, yeah.
And thank you, and then, um, you said the planning commission didn't meet in February, did you meet in February or January?
We both, I don't think we met, um, no, we met in January, it's been a while.
Okay.
I know we did not meet in February though, but that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Cody. Um, up next, City Clerk, Ms. Reynolds.
I want to start off by telling everybody thank you for all the time, of course. Been very, very generous to me the entire time that I've been here, it makes it hard to say goodbye, but I want you to know that I appreciate you and I hope that it's clear friendships together, so thank you very much. Um, January, of course, is one of the busiest months of the year. We've gotten all the W twos, the ten ninety-nines and the ten ninety-nine Rs sent out. We have gotten all the quarterly reports and the annual reports submitted. All the salary increases have been input into N code and all of the twenty twenty-one transfers that were approved by the council have been completed. Um, I want to, uh, make sure that you all know there's an, uh, an annual financial report that the clerk's responsible for by the end of March each year and I'll complete that before I leave, so it'll it'll be done and nobody has to worry about that. Um, the twenty twenty-one budget is closed, the twenty twenty-two budget is installed. So as you're looking through your financial reports, if something doesn't seem quite right, then please let me know. I balanced, I think everything's fine, if you see something, please let me know. Um, the auditors are still on site, they've been here since December twentieth and he told me last week he's got about another month. Now, that brings me up to a question, I will tell him tomorrow that you all accepted my resignation and so there will be some sort of exit meeting, I'm sure, so. Will that then just be the mayor, do I need to make plans to come back for that?
No, usually they'll do it with your first appointment.
Okay, so I don't even need to be concerned about that one?
Usually not.
Okay, so I do know that we're going to have a a couple of findings, he's already let me know about, and so those will become, I guess, official once once that happens. Um, the AMP, when we look at our reports, we're going to look at those here in just a second, you're going to notice that there was fifty thousand dollars in revenue and that was, I said the AMP, uh, the pool. That that was not because we've got business going on in the pool, it was the donation from the AMP commission. And then there was a sale on season passes that brought in some revenue, brought in about five or six hundred dollars. The Boys and Girls Club donation for ten thousand dollars has been made and we did meet, um, with the AMP commission on February eighth, but to be real frank with you, I haven't had time to get that update complete, so I don't have. You can ask me questions if you want to, but I don't have a lot to to present on that. The financial reports, the month to date and the year to date on this report that I do for you is the same, because it's January. The rainy day transfer, the forty-seven, five seventy-three, seventy-three transfer, that was from the fire department for the, um, was done in twenty-two, but it was for twenty-one business. That was what this transfer is and then we've got the rainy day, so we decided at the study session that I wouldn't include the police and the fire. So that amount is higher than it needs to be, but I'll get that reflected for February. So following along with these numbers, then I believe that we actually have collected eleven percent of our budget for twenty twenty-two. And then our expenses, um, we are at about eight percent, so that's good news, we brought in more than we could spend. Um, and the month to date reflects the same because that's still the same as the year to date. The street fund, we have collected about seventeen percent of the budget and we have spent about seven percent, so right on the street fund, way to go. The pool, it has thirteen percent collected in revenue, but only two percent in actual expenses and that's because of that transfer. The, uh, line item highlight that I do for you all, I see two things, Cody, you mentioned one earlier that I'm going to research, um, and that is your vehicle inventory. Those were lined up, it was a little bit higher, so that could have could be a misposting, so it's a handwritten note that we, you know, spreadsheet that we put out. And then for some reason, the unemployment in the mayor's office is, it could have been the workers' comp, I'm not sure what it is, but it's at four hundred thirty-seven percent, which I'm pretty positive is not correct. So we will figure out what that is and I'll report that to you. That is all that I have, unless you all have any other questions for me.
Uh, one clarification to the check to the Boys and Girls Club, which, uh, per the contract with the Boys and Girls Club, another donation.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that was clarified for the minutes.
All right.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Ms. Reynolds? Okay. We will move on. Talk about the parks for just a minute, that, uh, um, that line that she was talking about on the expenses for the water park is going to be changing, um, soon. We we have a start date of, uh, right after the first of March, um, I think they're going to be in town the twenty-seventh, right, that's what our last meeting was, um, so the twenty-seventh of this month and then, um, they'll be, uh, putting everything together to start the renovation process and all the slides at the water park. We're excited to be able to get that going and underway. Uh, we, uh, we had Mr. Wells out there today actually finishing up the, um, some work on the sound system. Uh, that was work that we actually started last year, but, um, again, due to an issue with trying to get supplies and things needed, um, and and then some illnesses that they had to deal with also, um, but it'll be, it'll be up and running by the time that we open up this year. The rotary, what they stepped, uh, has, um, um, the rotary decided that they would have want, uh, they wanted to help put some signs up for Cristello Park, if I can get that spit out. And, uh, and I talked to, uh, Mr. Thixton the other day and, uh, so there's some parks, uh, there's some signs that are going to be kind of like, uh, regular park signs like you would see, um, at state, um, in national parks that will um, just give direction to Cristello Park. Those initial signs will be going up there on the side of sixty-four B and then inside the park, there's also going to be another, uh, sign that will actually, um, will say like Cristello Park walking trails and again, the idea behind that is is so that we can, um, you know, one, that they, they'll when we say the walking trails, it doesn't start getting mixed up with the memorial walking trails that we already have. And we'll have the Little Frog Bayou Trail and then we're going to have all these other sets of walking trails anyway, they're going to be connecting to that, so. It'll be a an identifier for those particular trails, which would be really nice. And then a young lady by the name of Kennedy Holland has raised money to pay for a handicap swing, um, or a merry-go-round, either or, so we're in the process of, um, uh, of, uh, finding the everything that we need for that so that, uh, we can, um, uh, get that installed. We have, uh, a couple of other things going on with the trails that, um, I think everybody's going to really like once we, once we get it and we're going to hopefully have a, um, a meeting with our trails or our, uh, Parks Committee, um, you know, soon. Uh, Lake Alma Trails, the work up there is going well, they are almost to the point of, uh, where the, uh, bridge is going to go again. And, um, and so it's moving along quite nicely at this point. We, uh, there's going to be a couple of issues that we're going to have to address when we get to the bridge. We had some of the makeup of the construction of the bridge, but we're already talking with We have some, the makeup of the construction of the bridge, but we're already talking with the state and the engineers with that. And so we don't think it's going to, we don't expect that to be an issue, that it's gonna slow up the progress of that trail. We're also looking at already getting the second phase of the trails designed and laid out so that we can begin to work on the next application for a grant so that we can get going on the second phase, once the first phase is complete. We, if you haven't been up there to look at them, you need to go up and look at the work that's being done because it's, it's pretty sharp. It's, it's really cool. Renovation of the water park, I talked to you about that. And I think, I think that's it with the parks. Anyone has any questions over parks?
I do. Did you say her name was Kennedy Holland?
Yes.
And on that particular topic or subject, yeah, thank her for, you know, going out and coming back. Are we talking about that for City Park, Cristello Park?
No, Cristello Park.
Okay, so has, you know, have we had any further conversations about how that's gonna fit into the overall plans for, you know, any type of other development at Cristello Park?
Well, that was part of the original discussions for the development of the planning area here anyway. So I, I mean, if you do the swing, it has to be set aside. It has to kind of be out in its own space with a fence around it and things like that. So I mean, that was already, that was already discussed in the original plans for Cristello Park.
Right, I just didn't know if anyone's, if there's been any other discussions with, like, the Parks Committee or anything else along those lines with, you know, the layout and all that kind of stuff.
Not other than what we had originally talked about and decided on. The only thing that kind of even held that up, you know, that, to that point, was not getting this, this last grant that we've been run at. Talked to Tracy about that just the other day, I think it was last week. We talked specifically about that. Once we get through the CDBG grants that we're working on right now, then she'll immediately start working on Parks Grants again. And we already have a thing, I mean, we've got a game plan for that moving forward to be able to apply that again. So and then we need to, we just need to get a meeting set. I actually meant to Wednesday send a, an email to Mr. Warnock, and I, and I have not yet. But we need to get a meeting with the Parks Committee set. Any other questions? Okay. Moving on to Mayor's Notes. We had our intergovernmental meeting today with Crawford County. And I think a lot, if you probably know this, but I want to just make sure that, that we, that this is top of mind. They expect the Quorum Court to agree and pass the motion to add the extension of the one cent sales tax, county tax, to the ballot this year. That tax does not actually sunset until 2023. But the ballot question is gonna be to extend that tax, to go ahead and to agree to extend that tax another five years. Judge Yulstrap's thought on this is, is that instead of trying to make it a permanent tax, to just extend it out another five years, and in five years, we'll have a better understanding of where 49 is and its progress and other things that are happening in the county. I, I, I'm with that. I'm on that line of thought, and I believe everyone else is. All the other mayors in the area are. I haven't heard anybody say otherwise. And so with that, I would say to the council that hopefully you're in support of this and that you will talk to individuals about this tax. This is gonna be in the, our first election round, not the, in the primaries, what was I saying there, in May. What that means to us, for 2021, I'll remind you, that was a little over $800,000 that came into us, to our general fund. Since this tax has been in place in 1999, over $10 million has come to the city over that tax, through that tax. That tax is very, very important to us as a city and to the county. I mean, it's not just the city either. The county benefits from this. And under, under the current judge, he's, he's been very good at helping us when we've asked for help. And, and we expect that kind of relationship to continue, even with the new judge coming in, especially with the two candidates that have announced at this point. So we, I just, I would say that this, this tax is very important. So please keep that in mind as we move forward and get closer to the primaries. Also, I didn't want to muddy this up with a bunch of resolutions added last minute. But we have a chance here too, and I've talked to Chief Wakefield about this. We talked a little bit about that last night. I wanted to get his thoughts on this. Discussion that came last year, it was when this actually started, when, when we started opening up the community building as a emergency shelter when we started having that equipment, weather, things of that nature. One of the drawbacks to that is, is that we don't have a generator over there if we were to lose power. The community building is also listed in one of our disaster plans as a backup place, location for city business to, to be held. Which also makes it important to have a backup generator attached to that building over there. We all, we have one here. Basically, we're using the old one that the fire department had when they were here. Eddie needs that over at another location. And, and our problem here with it too is, is that it doesn't produce clean electric. So anytime that we've lost power here, we start, our servers start going crazy, our computers. I mean, it just doesn't work well. And so the new generators that are out available to us, they, they have fixed those problems. So with, what I'm saying to that is, is that generators are hard to get right now. Chief Wakefield knows this because they've been waiting for a while. We, there's, his is in that they ordered, but there's also a chance for us to grab a couple of others right now also. And so what I am asking for, the generators, tax and all, that $73, right, Eddie?
Correct.
That's $7,300 for each one of the generators. We can, we can use our funds to cover the cost of those. It'd be three generators in all, two for the fire department. No, one for the fire department, two, two for the city. I tried. But no, one, one, one for this location here. We'll take this one and move to four, right, it's where you were at. And then, and then the other new generator will be at the community building. So it'll, it'll have backup power there as well. And so we just need the council to, someone to make a motion and, and say that they're okay with us spending that money under the offer funds and taking care of the generators.
How much is left in the offer funds?
We haven't spent hardly any of it.
Well.
From what we've already said, we're spending maybe $500 or something.
Yeah, and, and we have another, we have another check coming still.
Is that including what was designated for Mark and team? So is that $500,000 still left in there? Because also payroll, you know, part of the, I wouldn't say bonuses, but you know.
Retention.
The retention came out of that. And then if I recall, there was Mark about $450,000?
About $460,000.
$460,000 out of it. So has that already been allocated out?
We haven't transferred any of that yet. It won't until the work actually begins. We, we have $1.1 million, because we'll have another check coming in, in, in the May 1st to June. That's when that check comes in. And, and so out of that $1.1 million, we haven't, we haven't spent much of anything out of there.
Well, we currently have in the bank account is some $550,000, maybe. I can't remember that number from this morning.
Yes.
We have, we've done the premium pay for this general fund. Mark is gonna submit a check request for his portion from the premium pay. That'll bring us down maybe to about $500,000. Here's probably about $50,000, something about like $40, $50,000, somewhere around there. So that'll bring us down to about $500,000. Then we should get about another $600,000 in June, about June or July.
So we have, we have plenty of, and we're okay with this.
And timeframe doesn't affect the projects that you have going, Mark?
Say anything?
That timeframe of that, of that additional money coming in won't affect any of your projects or anything?
No, we'll just wait, you know, for shirts available, yeah.
I have no issue with the, with the generators. I think it's needed, especially if we're using, if we need it for the fire department, that's, that's huge. And if we're using the, the city property for, for shelter and bad weather and stuff, I think it's definitely better to have that than not. So and if we can use our funds for it, that helps with the burden of the general fund.
It's an opportune time, like the mayor said. They've been hard to get. Our intent all along was to move this one when we gave up this fire station. Take it out, refurb, kind of refurbish it and move it to Eagle Crest to get us generator power there because we don't have anything. And since then, we've started having a lot of trouble at Fire Station Number Three, which is our second most popular station that's used. We're gonna take the new one and put it there. Refurbish this one and move it to Eagle Crest. And we'll end up with one that we can use for kind of spare parts. Because a couple of these generators are first generation. That's why when you're talking about clean electricity, this one will never work for what they're trying to do here at the mayor's office because it's like first generation, now they're up to like fifth generation.
For what you're reporting, it's acceptable.
And plus it's bigger than what we have out here, which is what they need. So it'd be real good for the community center and the mayor's office. Of course, it'd be an improvement for what we have at the Station Three, at the Eagle Crest Station. You know, there's one truck and an air compressor, you know, air conditioner during the summertime, and that's about it. So we don't need a whole lot out there to take this whole and make it work. We'll have to buy a couple of pieces. I don't think there's any natural gas out there, so we'll have to put in a propane tank or something. But it'd be a lot less than buying a whole new generator out there.
And, and to be clear, with all of the generators, there'll, there's gonna be some, there'll be a, a little bit of extra cost. Like the community building, for example, we're gonna have to get a plumber to run the, the gas after that.
Oh, maintenance plans and things like that to make sure.
There's gonna be some additional operating costs.
There'll be a transfer switch. I don't know if it included the transfer switch or not.
Yeah.
It's about as hard to get as a generator.
That, that is true. So but, but all in all, it'll be, again, we, we have the funds. We can, when I talked to the chief yesterday, he was gonna pay for his out of the fire. I don't, again, this is, that's what these funds are for, is to be able to use for these things. Okay, so you mean the motion, are you?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
So we have a second, let's do a roll call, if you would, since I'm sure Chief will have to stay.
Okay, Larry Blasen, man?
Yes.
Terry Perry?
Yes.
Chief Deuce, Dan?
Okay.
Tim Duncan?
Yes.
Sandra Kopecky?
Mr. McGee's absent. All right, motion carries. I want to thank everybody for that. And then before we close to Shawna, I want to say that, as you and I talked the other day in the office, I have to see, you know, we've done a good job in there as our clerk and treasurer. We, I hate it, but I understand also.
Thanks.
Say thank you for all that you've done. And then with that, since Mr. McGee is.
The study session.
Oh, study session, yes, we need to get the study session. We want to, next Monday is a holiday. Do you want to, I think we need to, we need to meet probably next Tuesday, the 22nd.
Is this the one you want me to attend?
Yes.
The City Council meeting?
Yeah, I'm unavailable that night too. Okay. But.
About Monday, the 28th.
I'm available on the 28th.
I'm available on the 28th. Is there any reason we need to perform that?
The clerk treasurer position, we probably ought to meet before the 28th, I would, I would think.
Yeah, we should.
To discuss the transition plan.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't need to go out that far. So the, so the 28th, we make that the daycare, right? Shawna?
I'm available on the 28th, that's fine.
But, and you probably need to be available for the other also, so.
So I'm available on holiday, if y'all wanna work on the holiday. I'm available Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Coming next week?
Yes.
Is everyone good next Wednesday? Church tonight?
Just fine with me.
I am able to.
You good? 23rd?
Yes.
You good?
Yes.
Everyone? All right, so we'll do the 28th. So the 23rd will be the clerk position, clerk treasurer position. The 28th will be daycare.
Can we, can we just put both of those on the same study session on the 23rd? A little bit longer now, but.
Well, also on the 23rd, we probably want to discuss the salary piece, anything that goes along with the, the clerk position. Because, you know, that was the, that was an outstanding conversation.
Do you think that's a six or seven?
Out of six. My, my preference, my, my suggestion on this would be is to keep these. I would do one. I would, I would have two meetings and do one, one subject each meeting.
I like that one.
I know.
Do one about the mountains.
Take care first, let them go. A single four, five hour meeting, then two, two and a half hour meetings would be better. I'm, I'm running from Fort Smith today, building back here, so I'm being selfish, but if we could do it all in one night, typically you do for me. I'm bringing her writing some caffeine.
No, he's bright with this. Well, why don't, why don't we do this? Let's keep the 28th on reserve, and let's, let's schedule the 23rd to deal with clerk treasurer transition and the daycare.
And then if you're gonna have a time.
And if we, and if it starts, because the last thing in the world that I, I really want to happen here is for us, for it to be getting late and then us just not thinking clearly or trying to make decisions that we don't need to be making at the time. How's that? Is that good with everyone?
And then you'll get the position posted on Sunday tomorrow, and who was gonna own that again?
And then I want to remind everyone too, after we adjourn, that she will need your signature over here on this piece of paper to adopt the votes. Can I give you my signature if you stay? All right, so if that's everything, then Mr. McGee's not here, so we need somebody to step up to the plate.
Make a motion.
Should we adjourn?
You didn't say.
We have a, we have a motion for Mr. Thacker. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Perry. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned.